We opened the February 3rd, 2020 Harwich Board of Selectments meeting at 6:15. And then by motion went into executive session in which we discussed litigation of an open, litigation as refers to Kent M. Sargent versus the town of Harwich. We made a decision to move ahead with this and that will come out sometime later, I imagine. And then I'd like to have you, well, first I need to read a statement, don't I, Don? As long as you remind me. As regarding open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audio tape this meeting must notify the chair prior to the start of the meeting. No one is signifying they'd like to do that, so I'd ask you to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move then to a weekly briefing. Well, we'll get that in the public comment, Don.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again. This would be first, the weekly briefing for the next three weeks for the work being done by Robert B. Hour under Contract One, and then the three-week look ahead for work being done under Contract Two by RJV. With regard to Robert B. Hour, the week of, excuse me, February 3rd, for the remainder of this week, they are continuing the gravity sewer installation on Old Heritage Way, as well as continuing installation on Route 137. Again, detours are still necessary in that area around 137. The two-week look ahead, they'll continue for the week of February 10th, gravity sewer installation on Old Heritage Way progressing to Liberty Trail, and again, continuing installation on Route 137. That is work that will necessitate extended work hours to set a deep sewer manhole, again on the week of February 10th, and detour is still necessary. The three-week look ahead for Robert B. Hour, February 17th, continuing on Liberty Trail, progressing to Spencer's Trace, and still working on Route 137 with detours. For RJV, they've begun this week, week of February 3rd, they're working on installing sewer on Cemetery Road, which means the road is closed between Route 137 and Church Street. The week of February 10th, they'll be installing sewer on Southwest Drive, again necessitating road closure between Route 137 and Church Street. And the week of February 17th, they will continue sewer work on Southwest Drive, again road closure between Route 137 and Church Street.
Thank you, Jill. Moving next to public comment, and Don, I'd ask you to make a statement on this to start us.
Yeah, sadly, excuse me, I've got cold again. You have that thing timed, so it's always when I'm speaking? Sadly, there's another icon of the town of Harwich that has passed away this week. We've lost Marge Marion. Marge was a gentle soul. She was involved in all manner of town activities. She was on the Conservation Commission. She was a board of health. She was a fierce advocate for the Chase Library. And more lately, she gave the herring run reports at town meeting. We'll all sorely miss her. She was a wonderful lady.
Thank you, Don. And if nothing else, we certainly remember the herring report each year. It was actually very popular because that was our last motion of the night, too, so it meant that we got out after that, all that motion. Thanks again, Don. Anyone else for public comment? Mr. Clark?
Good evening. Two things. First, real quick, it's nice to take a ride to Station Two, we're one week in, and not to be greeted, or I should say, it's actually the reverse, they never like, contractors never liked seeing me coming, but this week it was really nice to have three firefighters with big smiles on their faces. It's gone very well, and on behalf of the department, I thank the board and all the committees for their support, and certainly the taxpayers. We are thrilled, and it's going very well. Little work to do, but it's going very well. Secondly, I'm always inspired by youth stepping up on their own, self-motivated to do things in the community, in the country, and even worldwide. And I was made aware, very inspired by a young lady from Harwich, who's a sixth grader at the Monomoy Middle School, doing fundraising to help the relief with the fires in Australia. They are devastating. And the big devastation is all the animals. And I was even more motivated when I learned it was my granddaughter. So with that, I would ask that if Samantha could speak to you this evening briefly.
We would love it.
Certainly.
Good evening, guard members. Thank you for allowing me to speak here tonight about a subject that is very important to me. My name is Samantha Clark. I am a student at the Monomoy Middle School. I'm helping, I'm making bracelets to raise money to help support Wires Wildlife Rescue. Wires is the largest nonprofit wildlife rescue charity in Australia. Their mission is to help re-inhabit, or rehabilitate, sorry, and persevere, or preserve Australian wildlife after the damage and devastation caused by recent wildfires. I wanted to find a way to help the animals in Australia. My love of making bracelets is my opportunity to make a positive impact. The bracelet for this fund is a simple style. A hundred percent of the sales will be donated to Wires Wildlife Rescue, and over $450 has already been raised. Anyone can help by doing one or all three of the following: purchasing a bracelet, following @slothemy on Instagram, sharing my story. Bracelets are $15. Your support will provide us the opportunity to make a powerful difference and help the animals in Australia. Thank you. May I pass one out?
Sure.
Thank you.
Samantha, before you, before you leave the microphone, could you tell us again where we purchase the braces?
Excuse me, what did you?
Where would you, where can we purchase the bracelets that you referred to?
You can DM me on Instagram, or email me, or email my dad. I can give you the information.
Well, we certainly have your dad's email.
We'll make sure that certainly with police and fire, we have it on social media.
Thank you.
And I've given a copy to Carolyn.
Norm, you realize you were saying every word for behind her. We could see it.
Makes me a little nervous, Steve.
That was great.
So, Norm and Samantha, maybe we could get this into the office downstairs, so anyone that's here tonight, or anyone that's watching tonight, could come into the office and get that information?
Absolutely. I'll make sure that a copy of this is brought tomorrow.
That'd be great.
Great job, Samantha.
Thank you.
I'm just, I'm just curious, some following ups. Does that imply that the chair has an Instagram account?
No, but that's why, because I can't, well, I don't.
That's enough.
But I have Norm's.
She, she lost me at Instagram and DM, so we'll figure that all out.
And what's your, what's your Twitter handle, Mr. Chair?
I like to lie and say I do that. But I do have Norm's.
And just, just, so she wasn't real clear, but her dad is Officer Tom Clark. He's the school resource officer at Monomoy, so he's absolutely approachable and is going to help with this as well.
Great.
Good call, good job.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Ed?
After.
After Carolyn?
I'm just going to be real quick. I'm just letting you know it was a great Super Bowl Sunday. Thank you for the people that came. And on Wednesday is our then and now at 3:00 PM at the Community Center. We hope to see some of you there. Thanks.
Well, certainly, the hot fly Sunday got me in the right track for the rest of the junk food I ate today. Anyone else for Ed?
Yeah, just, well, I, I'm just, this is just a note, because quite honestly, I'm not sure I would have done it unless he was in the audience, but I'd like to announce that Alan Hall, longtime resident of Harwich, is now going to be the facilities manager of Outer Cape Health Services. And we, Larry and I are on the board of directors of the agency, and we welcome you. Thank you, Alan, for taking the job.
Nice to have familiar face. Jamie?
Jamie Goodwin, Channel 18. I just wanted to remind everybody, if they have not signed up yet for the new emergency alert system, I noticed a couple of people in this room, their names have not signed up yet. I won't name everyone.
I haven't.
It's, it's, yeah.
I did.
And you can find that on the town website's homepage. It's under News and Announcements, and we've been trying to keep it in the second or third, and you just click on it and fill out your information. If you are having any trouble, you can email me directly at jgoodwin@town.harwich.us. And if you come to any of the birthday celebrations at the Community Center, I will be there, and I can personally help you sign up. So if you want to come find me, and I can help you sign up for this. Thank you.
My problem is now the computers and memory chips have been doing. Anyone else for public comment? Announcements? If not, I'd like to move to the consent agenda, and I know, Don, you wish to hold...
A1.
The A1, and we'll bring that back for final readings.
We're okay with A1, thank you. Okay. Consent agenda minutes, A2, August the 12th, 2019, regular session. B, vote to approve the referral of zoning amendment to the planning board pursuant to MGLC 40A, Section 5, regarding expansion of industrial zoning district off Queen Anne Road. C, vote annual auto license renewal 2020 for Basil Brothers, Inc., doing business as Harwich Port Getty. D, vote annual auto license renewal 2020 for Sam's Auto Repairs and Sales, doing business as Sam's Automotive Center.
Second.
Any discussion, any discussion from the audience? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Moving next to public presentations, and we have the Cape Cod Technical High School. Mr. Sandborn, you're going to lead us on this discussion?
Good, how you doing? Mr. Chair, I'm working on an Instagram account myself, don't worry about that.
I'm not.
I'm not either. So I'm here to present the 21 budget for Cape Cod Tech. It is not, it's in draft form, but I don't see it changing as it goes to full committee and a public hearing in February, late February. So I think I'm bringing good news to the town of Harwich, although I never think it's good news when there are less students at our school from any town, but financially good news. We've been working on this budget really since the middle of, since April of last year, where the departments submit their initial budgets, and then working with our finance subcommittee, starting in October and up till now, and you see the members of that committee. And before I say anything else, I just wanted to say a couple of words about the passing of Lee Culver. Lee was a longtime, over 30-year member of our school committee. I know some people in the audience, I saw at his services, and many of you, and Lee was always somebody who was extremely supportive, always willing to do something for youth, and we're going to sorely miss him at Cape Cod Tech. But he always, he's, we're going to make sure everybody from his family is at the groundbreaking, sorry, the ribbon cutting, in September or October. So just wanted to say that at the outset. And I'm also joined by Bob Furtado, who's the vice chair. Bob, raise your hand. He's the vice chair of our, our school committee, and he's from the town of Harwich and a former autotech teacher at the school, so. So we've been working on the budget. I'm very happy to say that our overall enrollment, as you can see from Harwich, it's not true, but overall, we had a nice spike in enrollment this year of 46 students. This is after several years of declining enrollment, and we're very excited about that. I've also made some changes in our admissions process, and I think those had some, some positive impacts, but I also think excitement about the building has, has helped things. You probably saw that when Monomoy came online. This is the pie chart of that enrollment. Barnstable's still significantly the largest part of enrollment, at 31%, followed by Yarmouth. The numbers are here as well for the last several years. If you go to the far right, you'll see the numbers for this year. Harwich composes 9.4% of our overall enrollment, down, as you can see, significantly, almost three percentage points over the last several years. So I'm presenting to you a 2.76% increase with that 40 increase of students, 15,504,000. You'll see, I think we've been, and we should be, good stewards of the taxpayers' money over the last many years, from FY14, we have never been over 3%, with the exception of 16, I'm sorry, when we asked for money for the stabilization fund, you may recall, 250,000. That's why that's 4.49, but that went right to the feasibility study for the facility. We are still getting the vast majority of our funds to fund our budget from the citizens of 12 towns through the, through the assessment process, and it's over $12 million this year. And on a percentage basis, well, first of all, the operating budget is in yellow. As that rises, so does, so do assessments, because state aid and local revenue are pretty paltry. We are devoting, you'll see in this budget, a decent amount from our excess and deficiency fund, and also, we did give some money back to each town last year because, because we have gone over the 5% limit on excess and deficiency. This is just the history of the operating budget since '14, and you see that local revenue, we are at a high point in local revenue, and that's because, like I said, we're going to devote some more of excess and deficiency to, to this budget, which really makes assessments go up a little less than 2.76%. Overall, they're going up by about 2.64, I think, is the, the final number. What is the money used for? This is, obviously, it is a people business, and the most important people in the building, students, are the teachers. So 35% of the budget is teacher salaries. Obviously, salaries all across the board and benefits are the vast majority of a, of a school budget. These are the numbers from that pie chart, probably easier for people in the audience to see, that, and you see benefits. We got a lot of great news from Cape Cod Municipal Health Group this year, where it's probably going to be a 0% increase. That is not official, but we are, we are anticipating that. And I do want to say a tiny bit about retiree benefits, because I think Cape Cod Regional Technical High School has taken a serious look at the unfunded liability represented by retirees' health insurance. We have a 18-plus million dollar unfunded liability. We've adopted a policy, in this budget here, we're devoting $150,000 to that. We are a member of the Plymouth County OPEB Trust, which we have our money invested that we've been putting away for the purpose of trying to fund the unfunded liability. And our current plan, working with actuaries, has that unfunded liability expiring in 28 years. So we are going to increase that amount that we're putting in the budget every year until it gets to 300,000, and that will stay, so $50,000 a year. And then we will let it go, go from there, and then if Barnstable County ever becomes fully funded, the assessment that we pay to Barnstable County, which is also in this budget, represented by retirement, which is 3.2% of the budget, that money will also be devoted to eradicating the unfunded liability for retirees' health insurance. We just met with our Plymouth OPEB Trust today. We've had a lot of good results with investments in the good economy that we've been having lately, so we have a $1.4 million balance in that Plymouth County OPEB Trust for Cape Cod Tech as we speak now. So only, only put aside for the payment in the future, way down the road, of eradicating the unfunded liability and paying health, health benefits for retirees. We actually now have more retirees than we do active employees, about 135 retirees and 99 employees. Where is the, where's the increase? It's mostly in salaries. We've, we came to an agreement with our, with our unions at a 2-2-2, and it's a 3.26% overall budget. There were some contracts with our aides and custodians where we had to make some adjustments for cost of living, and making it more on par with the surrounding towns, so their, their salaries went up, or their contracts went up a little more. We also brought a couple of salaries that were previously covered by grants into this budget. One is our co-op coordinator, coordinates all jobs for the students in 11th and 12th grade, working during their shop week out in the community. We brought him on, and we also brought in one of our aides who was previously funded by a grant. So that's why the salary change is the biggest part of the increase of this budget. Materials and services has gone up a little bit, and we also, with transportation, we just signed a new five-year contract with Harwich, Cape Destinations from Harwich, a fixed contract, so the entire increase is being absorbed in this budget. So for five, for four more years now, we won't have an increase in our transportation costs, because we do it in that way, so it's a fixed budget, it's a known quantity for the rest of the time. So this all sums up, we've decreased our capital budget, obviously, because we're only fixing emergencies in the current facility, real emergencies, and we don't anticipate a lot of costs in the beginnings of the new school. Budget drivers, obviously, I've already covered that, salaries and benefits are 76% of the entire budget. So on the assessment, operating side, you know that we now have two assessments, and on the operating side, for the budget I just presented, the town of Harwich has a $1,178,798 assessment. That is down from the previous year about $242,000. So that's the operating side. And then we also have an assessment for the building. So this is the amortization schedule for the building, and you see, we chose, in consultation with the 12 towns a couple of years ago, to have a 20-year term, this is at 3.3% interest, with level principal, which leads to a declining debt schedule over those 20 years. So we're in year two of this debt, of this schedule, $6,260,000 figure in total for the 12 towns, and Harwich's portion of that this year is 589,481, which I believe is, is a decrease as well, both in, because the amortization schedule decreased, but this is also a portion by enrollment percentage of the previous year. So those, I think, are both decent news for the town of Harwich in this budget year. One final piece before I open it up to questions, or actually, I have one other thing after that. We do a graduate follow-up study, one year after graduation, and we had 119 students out of 137 graduates respond, which was, I think, a very good 92% response rate. And you see where they, where they were, that one year after graduation. We had 10 in the military, 51 related to their shop, and related to their shop is represented in the red. 43% of the students were deployed and related to their shop. 38 students, or 32.2% went on to further education. Quite often, that education takes the form of a, of further technical training. And then, as you see, employed 16, one student was unemployed, and two were not in the labor force from that study. We do that every year for students, one year after they've graduated from our school. And we've added another question, do you stay on Cape Cod? Where are you that one year after? This is only a one-year snapshot, obviously, but one thing that was asked during the, is asked of me quite often, do your students stay on Cape Cod? And we're finding that in at least one year after graduation, many of them are on Cape Cod. 84% of them responded that they're still on Cape Cod. So, and then the only other thing I wanted to say, we are slated to move into the new facility in June. We're having a rent-a-crate meeting on Wednesday to start the...
You're going to have to expand that.
Rent-a-crate is the, the company that rents the crates to us to move the stuff over. So that's going to be the beginnings of when people, I guess they're their orange crates, and when they come on site, I think people understand that we're going across this, going across the street in a few, few months. So we are, when we were presenting this, it was a $128 million project. Right now, it's a little over 121 million. We are under budget, and, and we're under, ahead of schedule so far. The June date is a, is ahead of schedule. We are behind on closing up the envelope, which I'm getting a little concerned about, but at our month, at our Monday meetings, they're telling us we, we are still on track for a June entry, students starting in September. And I also look to have an event for the, two different events for the community, one being a ribbon cutting, and then I'd also want to have an open house for the towns, probably on a weekend or a nighttime event in that time period in the fall as well. And I, once again, as Norm did, I want to thank all the taxpayers for their overwhelming support of this project, and, and all the boards here in Harwich who have always been very supportive of our school. And with that, I'd open it up to questions.
Okay. Don, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uncharacteristically, on behalf of our beleaguered taxpayers, I love hearing words like holding the line and under budget. So appreciated that part of the presentation. I have two questions, there's some related, but you're in front of us, so. When the new building was put out there, unlike the relationships with the districts because of the way the tech was created, there wasn't the possibility of going town by town to approve the override for that?
That is correct.
Has there been any subsequent discussion about amending that agreement at all?
No, there has not. No. No.
I'm putting my two cents in again. I think it would be a terrific thing to look into, because it's, it's an anomaly. It's not the same as we treat other things.
Right.
So in town meeting, if you stick around here long enough, to me, town meeting is a real big deal.
Yep.
And finally, we remiss if I didn't make my annual appeal to you about when we're putting Jimmy Marsline's name on the lobby, or the foyer, or something, because without Jimmy, there's no tech building.
Yes, and I've agreed with your assertion, and I don't have an answer for you right now.
Beg, ask them when you go back.
I wish I put that on record, so we, you know, Don doesn't have to say it again.
Yes, no, no, no.
MP3.
Don, Don is not the only one who's said that to me.
No, we, actually, we all agree with Don. We'd love to get some, some recognition there.
So I've been up touring the construction site, very impressed.
Thank you.
Michael?
No real comments, just thank you for the simplicity of the presentation and, and the good numbers.
You stole my comment. No, really, truly, this is, the presentation format, I think it just makes it so much easier for the taxpayers to look at. And it's, we're all trying to, you know, accomplish the same task with everything that we do, whether it be the Monomoy School District, or what we do here, is to try to make this kind of information, you know, understandable, easily presentable, so that, because there's big numbers here, and obviously, the taxpayers are very concerned about where we're headed as a town, and, and the impact it's having on their ability to, to pay their taxes. So it's, it's a great presentation, and it's great that you hold the line the way you do, so, thank you.
To that point, Mr. Ford, we, as the current facility, we want this school to be even a larger community resource. Remember, there are many services that can save the taxpayers' money that we offer at the school, and I, that's everything from a meal to a haircut to a scratch and dent fix, so please feel, look at us as a resource, as a, as a community as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, of course, agree with those, and this slide says a lot, you know, we talk about budgets, what a great slide that is.
Yeah.
A lot of people working here. I just have a observation that you pressed me a little bit, and that is, is that the state aid has basically been flat for the last four or five years.
Yeah, we got 30...
I was hoping with these kinds of big state aid, that would be rising.
You know, we did, you know, hold harmless, have you heard of hold harmless?
I have, yeah.
Okay, so for the first time in years, we're not held harmless. So I don't know if this, you're talking about the Student Opportunity Act money?
Right.
That came in, and it's supposed to help schools that have gateway cities primarily, but also students with economically disadvantaged special ed costs, health insurance costs. We did, we did make some inroads in going past hold harmless. That's going to be, this Student Opportunity Act's going to be phased in over seven years, so it remains to be seen if it's going to be, you know, a good influx of revenue for us. My hunch is it won't be, but I was surprised that we got a little more...
You picked yourself from earlier on, but I was hoping there'd be some difference.
Yeah, yeah, that, most of that money is going to gateway cities.
Okay.
Yeah.
Question I have, Bob, is you have a line item somewhere in this about building leadership. It's 2.8 per, explain to me what building leadership is, as a...
That's going to be, that's going to be people like the principal, myself, we, we have seven administrators, so we have a sped director, we have an assistant principal, a principal, a technical studies director, a business... director, a business manager, and I'm missing one, and myself. So there's seven of us in total. So building leadership, and there's one other item in there that accounts for those.
That's a broad definition, I was wondering what it implied.
Yeah, that's primary, it's not just building leadership, it's also administration. We'll incorporate those seven people, their support staff, the treasurer of the district is also in the, those numbers.
Is that, is the implication, is that's a function as a student? Do you interact with students on leadership, or is that internal for administration?
Oh, yeah, yes.
Trying to sort that out.
Yeah, staff, staff, out of the seven administrators, five of them are directly in contact with students at all time. I happen to be in the building where the students are, so I'm in direct contact with students all the time, too, which I kinda like. I'd ra, I'd rather not be in a district office somewhere down the street, and makes it a much more exciting and vibrant place.
My last question is, you have a line item for dental assistant instructor, I thought that that was leaving the dental program.
I'm glad you brought that up. So we have a program, dental assisting, and that's the teacher for that program for our students. And our students would go to the Ellen Jones Dental Center, which is in our facility right now.
Right.
When we were in the planning stages of this, we had-
But that building's going away, right?
Yeah, it's going to Patriot Square. So our students are gonna be getting in a van, they used to be able to walk through a door, now they'll take, get in a van and go down one exit to go to Patriot Square to do their internships, so.
Well, that's great, so you're still involved in the program.
Oh, we're still involved with them.
Off-site now.
Yes, and it, I think it's a win-win for both organizations.
I like that.
And their leader, who runs the, the health center, the dental center at our place, she's still on the advisory committee for our dental assisting program.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
So really, no loss there.
Right, good. Any other questions? Anyone in the audience care to do a quiz, Mr. Sandborn, while we, while we have him trapped here? If not, great job.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is new business, and Joe, this is gonna walk you, I think, through a lot of items.
So the first two items, Mr. Chairman, are related to the establishment formerly known as REDS, now known as the Seal Pub and Cafe, the, as you may recall, last week, we received the liquor license, now we're just looking to close on the common vic and the entertainment.
Michael?
The only question I have is the, same one I brought up before, on the entertainment license. And I think it's a broader discussion that we need to bring back, when the police chief was before us, last year, he had discussed twelve being his ideal time to shut down entertainment. And I, and I, and I'm not sure what REDS permit was, that wasn't part of this, but I assume it was until 1:00 AM. But I think we need to bring back that the chief's wishes, at least, and he said, there should be time where the music stops, the lights go on, and people start to filter out because the doors have to be locked by one o'clock. So not, not gonna hold it up on this, but I think we do need to have that discussion.
Great. Steve?
And this, this is an outside music, right?
No, this is inside, I, I believe. Joe, could you-
It's inside.
I think it's inside only.
Does it?
It's inside.
Oh, okay.
Anything else, Steve? Can I get to Don?
No, that was the only.
Actually, I'm following up what Steve said, even if it's inside, we generally have a statement about noise not emanating from the facility that's not here.
Michael, we could, we could condition on that, I think, in the motion.
So I, I would move that we approve the annual common viculars license for Beachlight LLC, DBA, the Seal Pub and Cafe. That's motion one.
Okay.
Okay, we, we can come back in a minute.
Okay, short second.
Okay, anyone from the audience care to comment on that? Ford, move ahead.
That's the viculars.
If not, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Unanimous? Michael, we have motion for the-
Yep, I move that we approve the entertainment license for Beachlight LLC, DBA, the Seal Pub and Cafe, weekday, Monday through Saturday, 6:00 AM to 1:00 AM, recorded music, acoustic, acoustic live music, and occasionally karaoke with the noise not leaving the premises.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anyone else have a comment? Anyone in the audience have a comment? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to C. Oh, Michael, you have your hands up, you-
I move that we approve the change in manager at Main Street Quick Pick Inc. as presented.
Second.
Second, and just note this has your approval from all of the proper authorities in town. Any discussion? Anyone from the audience?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
My name is Howard Cahoon, I'm an attorney here in Harwich, and this evening I represent Main Street Quick Pick Market, and thank you very much for the motion, and hopefully you'll follow through with the vote. We're here to answer any questions. I would point out one thing, the, although the petition I filed is, I believe, correct, the agenda here this evening talks about the present manager, and that's incorrect, it's not, and I can't pronounce it.
Betcha.
Anyway, like, you still can't pronounce it.
That's why you're here, right?
Yeah, I think so, yeah. By the way, LA is right here, and he's the, you know, changing manager, he's the new manager, and he graduated from Montemoy High School, as did his brother. But anyway, the, the, I just wanted to-
How come one of you got a name we can pronounce and the other one does it? That's my question.
That's a point, that's a good thing.
So who, who is the manager of record right now?
Anil, N-A-N-I-L is the current manager, and-
I'm gonna change, I'm gonna change the motion if I can.
Please.
Do we have to withdraw the second?
Sure.
All right, I'll withdraw my motion. So I'm gonna move to approve the change in manager at Main Street Quick Pick Inc. from Anil Patel to Ale G. Patel.
Second.
Is that correct?
Wait a minute, and what, what did you say? The present, the present manager-
Present is Anil.
And the new is LA.
It's LA.
That's right.
Thank you.
Is there any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just for the record, staff has presented the materials as we have it in the files. I wouldn't dispute anything that's been said this evening, we certainly don't dispute the change to the new manager, but I'm not sure that this actually comports with the files. Again, the net effect is to have Mr. Ale G. Patel named his manager.
Do you have the actual paper here?
I don't have it here, I have it in the building.
Yeah, well, I'm quite, I, I, I would have remembered putting that name down. As a matter of fact, is he associated with the smoke shop?
Michael, we could do this condition right in the files.
Yeah, I'll just change it to conditioned.
We don't hold on.
He owns a gas station license on May twenty-eighth, and-
Okay. I'm just gonna change my motion to conditioned, my approval of the town administrator after he looks at the, is that okay, Don?
That's the same, second.
Joey, comfortable with that?
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay. Any more discussion? If not, Michael?
The only discussion is, my first motion was because I couldn't say that name either. So I said as presented.
Good.
That's it.
If you have any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good luck. Next, there was motions on conservation, Michael?
I'd move that we approve the recommendation of Harwich Conservation Committee Chairman, Brad Chase, to accept the request of Paula McGuire to step down as a full commissioner and become an alternate commissioner, and Ernest Crabtree from alternate commissioner to member to a full member.
Is there a second?
Second.
Did we interview the alternate?
Uh-
Okay. A while back?
Yeah.
Well, Ernest has been on the, Crabtree has been on the conservation commission-
For a long time.
For a long time, and then he was gone temporarily, uh, for good circumstances, he moved to, from full to alternate, now he's coming back as full.
And your motion specified with a term to expire, to, to complete the term for the resignation?
Yes.
Second.
Second.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving next to personnel update, this, Joe, I appreciate the information you gave us, was a request I, I know Michael made, and we agreed to, of getting an update on vacancies and where we stand.
Did you need me to go through the narrative, or is the-
Go for it.
So you can see there, the first one, support staff supervisor, I can confirm that that advertisement will appear this Thursday in the Chronicle, so that's underway. We're actually in the process of receiving applications for the next two positions there. I haven't had any update yet on whether we've received for the weight room at the community center, and then obviously, beyond that, I'm working with public safety, we're having ongoing discussions as to next steps on emergency management director.
Okay, any other questions? Follow-up questions for Joe?
Can I just have a minute to absorb this?
Possibly we can bring it back if we have.
Nope. I, I guess on the, on the program aid and the PT weight room attendant, when was the ad published?
Pardon, Carolyn, you, you have to use the microphone?
There wasn't an ad placed in the paper, it just went out internally, and it went on the town's website and posted internally within the building. We are looking to put it on indeed, but we haven't put it in the local newspaper.
I'll follow up with Mr. Lawton on that one, I think, I thought his reference was ad published, maybe perhaps he was talking about the website.
And I know in the past, we used to post internally for, ahead of going out into the paper, but I do think we changed that. I'm not sure we did for, for everybody, but it's supposed to be simultaneous?
So when it comes to HEA positions, the, the agreement is that it's simultaneous-
Okay.
On the same form.
So you'll follow up with Bob and get this in the paper?
Yep.
Thank you.
And next, anyone else? Next is a procurement update.
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you should have the two-part document in front of you, which comports with what was put in the packet. The first page, you can see there are procurements that have been completed within this fiscal year, and the second item is what is considered to be procurements that are either in process or that the administration department is aware of through actions such as town meeting votes or articles, and is pending more information.
Joe, your, your sense is, are we catching up with this? Do you expect us to?
Yeah, I, I think, I think the completed page, if you will, speaks for itself. So certainly, Bob and Griffin are making headway from where we were several months ago. You know, they're still trying to balance, though, what you have for the procurements that we're aware of through town meeting process and votes of that, different from procurements that may arise from either unexpected needs or, or other actions. So it's still the balancing act, but by and large, they're making progress, they continue to meet regularly as I did, and I have every confidence that we'll continue to process through the lists.
Michael?
If I could just go back to personnel, I, I have no questions on this, thanks for the update. Looks like we are moving forward. On the personnel, Joe, could the board get a list at some point in the near future of what positions are out there by department that we have not hired, things approved by town meeting, and positions that stand, especially ahead of, ahead of budget?
Mm-hmm, absolutely, yep.
Okay, good.
And just, just so the board knows, absolutely, soon after transition, I had reached out to all department heads and advised them if it had any open positions, that they still wanna get that information through administration. So what you see are the responses that we've gotten from department heads. The other ones that I can tell you about are obviously related to pending retirements, we're still waiting for certain documentation from staff before we can fill those, and there is one particular assistant department position that we're, we're struggling with the search process, quite frankly. But absolutely, we'll be able to identify all the open positions that are approved that are not yet in process.
Can we include summer positions in that?
Certainly.
Thank you. Or seasonal, I should say.
Understood.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Next is a, a discussion of a letter to support our Chatham colleague on buoy C outside of Cape Harbor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What you see there is actually the strong efforts of our harbor master, John Rendon, no, no pride of authorship from me whatsoever, and he did this in collaboration with his partners, Stu Smith and Chatham. And so I think it succinctly captures what we would wanna say and what the town of Chatham is looking for as our, as our neighbors.
Any discussion? Are there any motions?
Move that we approve the letter and sign it, approve to support the letter and sign it.
Second.
Second. Any discussion from anyone in the audience? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm just amazed if that buoy just moves around with a ten-ton weight or whatever down the bottom of it. Joe, you're still up, contract?
Thank you, under proc, excuse me, under contracts, you can see that we have the solid waste agreement proposed with CMAS. As you may recall, our DPW director was here previously, we had, the board had voted for two different contracts, we had a placeholder contract for the month of January, however, the vendor has been gracious in working with us, and what you can see in front of you in the packet is a contract that conforms to the town of Harwich's language and requirements. It's been vetted by staff and is presented for your approval. Would note that the, the form that was used by council is different than the standard thirty-B, so it did not have the section for funding, however, that has been approved previous forms by the accountant, finance director, and still stands.
Joe, could you just remind us what we're agreeing to in terms of cost for the-
For that, if I could defer to our DPW director, Mr. Chairman.
Because it's moving, it's moving up relatively modestly each year, so.
Hi, Lynn Cooper, DPW director. Mr. Chair, the costs are on the last page of the document, which state that it's ninety, ninety-four and change, and nearly a hundred. I, I know previously, I recommended a single-year contract, this is the same contract that Cavantus has had other, has signed with other communities, since there is no put-or-pay provision, meaning if we don't send it there, there's no penalty for it, there's no reason not to sign a multi-year contract. If we find a better price elsewhere, we're under no obligation to ship them anything.
Okay. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Anyone care to make a motion?
I guess I, just one question.
Okay.
Joe, you just mentioned the not thirty-B contract, this doesn't have to be on a thirty-B contract?
If I remember correctly, the solid waste is exempt from procurement, but as the DPW director has mentioned, this is a form that was constructed by KP Law that they've used in a number of municipalities, and quite frankly, it's the form I think that CMAS is gonna be comfortable signing.
But, and it is exempt from procurement?
Correct.
That's my question, great, thank you.
Any other discussion? Lynn, do you have another comment? No, no, I'm sorry.
I, I would be remiss if I didn't tell the board that, when I was here in December, I said we were gonna sign two separate contracts, one with New Bedford Waste, one with CMAS. When Mr. Lawton sent the contracts to KP Law, they essentially rejected the New Bedford Waste contract. I have since put the New Bedford Waste into the CMAS contract, the same form you see before you. Mr. Lawton is vetting it now, and I hope to have that before you in a week or two.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ed?
I'd just like to move that we approve the CMAS municipal solid waste disposal agreement.
Second, Steve? Okay, we have motion and second?
To ex, to extend to December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two?
Sure.
Is there any comment, discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? And Joe, you, you have a weekly now, because we're getting more nervous about town meetings.
Absolutely, ninety days from tomorrow, but who's counting? Really, what I just wanna draw out of this, as you can see from the timeline next week, is the presentation, or my presentation of the budget and budget message to the board with the finance committee present.
And we'll keep working on that, because it's gonna, it's gonna heat up in the next few weeks, as we get started on getting more articles in. Next on the item is a discussion on the, how we're doing on the town administrative Next on the item is a discussion on how we're doing on the town administrator's screening and search process. What we've been circulating is several drafts, and I'm doing this stepwise by drafts. I want this to be a methodical process. I get input from everyone as we finalize this. I'm not going to worry about finalizing it yet for a bit, but right now you have a draft with a screening committee charge. And please, if you haven't looked at that, look again. I have, by the way, sent these drafts to our search committee to get their input as well. And I've sent it to various people in town that's asked me for them because it's certainly not confidential. I want us out there as much as we can, is what I want to be transparent. Don, did I move, keep going?
Just one thing, it's an overarching thought. It's getting better every week, but I believe when we walked out in the last meeting, we conceptually had agreed to kind of a funnel arrangement, that the guys, we're going to hire as a search firm, we're going to receive all these and then move them along to the committee. It seems like there's an internal tug of war going on in some of the words, though. I mean, what I see happening, unless I misunderstood last week, is they'd aggregate these things and then they categorize them. Like the first third over here are highly qualified, the other ones are qualified, and then ones they don't deem as qualified. But they aren't going to start pulling things out before our committee sees them, right?
Right.
That's what we all agreed to?
That's what we agreed to.
Michael asked in particular about it.
Yeah, okay, but so somewhere along the line, some of this text has to kind of change to be consistent with that. Their job isn't to take things and pull them out so that we only get a half of them or two thirds of them.
And I agree that, once I get it, it is evolving as I go through.
But they are going to characterize what category they fit in.
That's what they're going to have. That's what the charge is for them to do.
Okay.
Yeah.
As long as they move along. I mean, if the committee doesn't want to look at them on the lower tier, they don't have to as far.
Right, then they'd indicate, you know, the levels.
Yeah.
But what, no one's excluded, you know, we're not excluded from seeing any of the resumes.
I just wanted to hear that, that's fine.
The other draft I've circulated, and I've got some comments, is on position profile, and I've updated that to add some things to it. KP Law gave us their document on open meeting law. As I mentioned last time, circulated a draft of the scope of the search. Again, this came from a document KP Law gave me that they'd used in Providence Town. My modification to that document that I got from KP Law was to change the focus somewhat and focus that the consulting firm we hire on recruitment and some help for the search committee, and to have the search committee, our search committee, be the primary screeners. Because I think we have a very qualified screening committee, search committee. I think we did a great job with our appointments, and I think, and also that will save us money for not asking the consulting firm to do that. They'll help, I think, organize it, and so we'll move on that. My intent, and Don, this may, and Michael, this may help some of your concerns, is we've all agreed that we want all applicants to be available to us so we can look at them, view when they come in. I've had some discussion, we have to be careful because of confidentiality. Right now, I think what we'll do is probably give, put all the applicants' resumes in a controlled room, and then we'll be able to look at them, go down, view and look at them, and that way we can assure that it's confident, they're protected. And secondly, I'd hoped, and I think, Joe, I got lost a little bit, to send a letter out confirming the search committee.
I was still trying to keep my arms-length approach to this, Mr. Chairman.
I'll get that out. My hope at this point is we need to get a letter to the search committee to confirm they need to be sworn in. Nita tells me we can do that at the, she'll join us at the initial meeting. My thought is I'm hoping to schedule that in possibly a week. I'll host the, chair, or host the inaugural meeting, and then I'm all of it, as we are all of it, and we let the search committee do their job and come back to us. So Don, I hope I'm moving to answer some of your questions as well.
Fine. We're getting there.
Which means that at this rate, I think I'll keep these drafts for another couple weeks. Once the search committee is sworn in and going, I think we'll come back and I'll take a vote on each of these that we agree with what all this says. Michael?
So just back to the, I mean, I don't know how much more tweaking we have to do on this. The only comment I have is on number four, which was my same comment, what we just got done talking about, receive and review resumes of semifinalists. So my only change is that.
Yeah.
And we've reviewed this for three weeks now.
Right.
And none of us have really offered any change. Why don't we vote this?
We can vote on it.
Don't you think we need to start moving this along?
That's fine.
Town meetings in 90 days.
That's fine, absolutely.
Elections are a short time after that.
I'm probably going to finalize it, and just at that point, I'm going to draft one more document on the process to review.
Okay. Getting a little nervous about the timeline here.
Good. I'm all for moving ahead.
Because six months is acting, we have to hire a town administrator, you know, and there's been several comments brought up to me by other people in the public. If we're going to finish this last minute before the election, should the next board be voting on who the town administrator is going to be, or who this board's, should this board be voting on?
Yeah. Yep.
I'll entertain a motion if you want to move ahead with this.
I just, I think, well, the request for quotes from the search committees, to me, is more important than nailing this down this week. We could tweak this and vote it next week. We have to get that request for quotes out, like now.
For the consulting firm?
For the consulting.
Consulting firm.
Yeah, I think that's in good shape because we did that. Our idea was remove some things.
And then we probably ought to.
So should we just go ahead with that? Because if we're going to hire a firm, we need to get quotes, and there's a certain amount of time invested in that.
I'd like to go ahead.
Sure. I move that we issue a request for quotes to the search firms for the town administrator search process.
Second.
Any more discussion? We'll get that out, and as Joe's inferred, I'm working through Bob Lawton on this.
Yeah, I do have the one comment because that, it needs to be explicitly stated somewhere because that's the scope of the contract. What are they asking them to do? We're asking them to receive and rank and then deliver. They're not delivering semifinalists, they're delivering everything ranked. That's a different statement.
Well, wait a minute, let's discuss that a bit. Because are we, I want to be sure we're in agreement. We're asking them to recruit and bring names to the search committee. Are we asking the search committee to rank those, or the?
We're asking them to receive all resumes and then to rank them as to highly qualified, qualified, not qualified, and then turn them all over. We're not asking them to turn semifinalists over.
So that's actually a step I did take out, trying to focus on recruitment and letting our search committee make that. So this, I'm, either way, I'm okay with, but I just want to be sure we're all in the same.
I'm just saying, if you're contracting, you're contracting for a particular service.
Yeah, and I know that at least one of the firms, of the two.
Right.
Did say, oh yeah, we would give you everyone that we reviewed.
Right.
The other one was a little vague on it.
But we have that, but.
Why don't we just say it? That that's what we're looking for, is we're looking for them to receive all resumes.
I follow that, if there was an agreement with that.
I'm in agreement with that.
So I'm in my motion to indicate that we're asking the firms to place their quotes based on the scope of work, that they will rank all of the applications and deliver all of the applications to the search committee.
Yeah.
Okay. That's motion, second to that?
Yep.
Okay. I'll add that, and then we'll get it out. Any other, any comments from the audience? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for that. Town administrators' reports?
If we could just go back to.
Sure.
Profile, the position profile?
Yeah.
Because I think that's an important thing for search committee, archive screening committee, for the residents of the town. How close are we to voting the profile? I have no comments.
I think I have all the comments.
Well, I've given mine.
I have comments from everyone.
Is it, was the draft in the?
Yes.
Yes.
It was, yeah.
I move that we approve the draft position profile.
Second.
Second? Don?
Just one comment, just so we can get it out there. This is neither tilted towards the current acting incumbent nor would have precluded him from putting in.
Correct.
Correct?
Completely neutral.
Okay. I just want the public to hear that. It's neither pro or con.
No, it's pretty broad, actually.
Yeah, it's very.
Yeah. I was.
Nothing, we're just want it out there.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We'll finalize that then. Thank you, Michael. We're getting there. Okay, now, if we have to move on, Joe, to county administrators' reports.
Thank you, Mr.
Just have one more.
Sorry?
Wait a minute, I jumped too fast.
And just a comment, so that maybe we could schedule it, and it's on the agenda. KP Law, open meeting law review. Can we schedule a date and have our committee, the search committee maybe in their first meeting, could we get somebody from KP Law here?
We can.
To go through what open meeting law is, confidentiality, and everything that's important to this committee that may not be as important to the other committee? This is a sensitive personnel thing, that we've each selected one person to be on.
Yeah.
Some have a lot of experience in what we're talking about, others may not. So I think that this is important. Give it to them in writing, but.
I invite further because we can do it, I'm sort of neutral on that, because the committee members we have have quite a bit of experience in town committees as well. So that's my concern.
Give it to them in a written form, so.
When I was on the county administrator selection committee a few years ago, they had the county council give us a 10-minute presentation, and all of us were in government, mainly because there's a presumption on the part of people who put in for this, unless they get to the finalist round, they don't want their names divulged, it'll compromise their careers.
Ed?
I think it's a good idea to have somebody from KP Law there, and if the issue of cost is any concern, I do remember the last time we hired, went through a hiring process or a review, Mr. Giorgio indicating that their services had gratis included uncertain number of trainings for committees on open meeting law, et cetera.
And I've talked to the lawyer I've been working with, and she's said she'll do this when we want her to. So that's my problem.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, I'll do that.
Okay.
Are we good for Joe?
Go ahead, Joe.
I don't know yet. Wait a minute, I want to pause you, Michael, one more chance. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the first item, as you can see there, is an update on 276 Queen Anne Road. As you may recall, after the town meeting action, that property was presented to all municipal departments as surplus to see if there was a need. On January 17th, water, wastewater superintendent presented to the real estate and open space committee, indicating that the water department was interested in perhaps securing that property for relocation of administration and supplies. The end result of that was that real estate and open space voted unanimously to retain the property for municipal use at this point, but didn't make any specific recommendations. So at this point, the update is simply that there is a demonstrated need at this point for it to be used for municipal purposes, and then I would recommend that it not be, that it not go further in the surplus process, meaning that it not be offered to the general public, that it still remain in the condition in which it is for further evaluation.
Okay. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. Next one is 203 Bank Street. First, and I apologize, I was remiss in not advising the board, there was a happy ending, so to speak, a mutual conclusion for the garden club that has partnered with the Episcopal Church in Harwichport to host their event. It was a nice situation where both parties get something out of it. The church is getting free fertilizer, and the garden club is getting access to a property that is unfettered and available. However, I have offered to the garden club that we can continue discussions in the future to see if we can bring it back to municipal property. As it relates to this municipal property, I met with the DPW director, and we reviewed materials that were provided to our facilities manager. So as you may recall, there was an article appropriation of $60,000 at the 2019 annual town meeting for the purpose of abatement and remediation to that. So we have located the report as to what chemicals and other items might have to be abated or remediated in that building. So I'll be working with the harbor master to begin a process of cataloging items that we may be able to declare a surplus for auction while we then continue to pursue next steps as far as abatement before demolition on 203 Bank Street. I know that there had been a rumor circulating that this property is deemed to be historic and was potentially impacted by the demolition delay. However, I was able to confirm with the chair of historical commission that that is not the case. So there's nothing in that regard that would impact this project. So more to come on that, but we did find the remediation report, and we're working off of that.
Okay, good. Thank you, Joe.
And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We'll move to the selectmen's report. Steve?
I just, I was remiss in not, when we were discussing the CMAS solid waste agreement that we entered into, not to thank Link, our DPW director. I mean, a great job in a very difficult environment to get a good deal there, and he did just that. So thank you, Link, appreciate it.
Yeah, I say good job. Michael?
Just if I could ask for an update on the Doane Road property. I know that's been kicking around in the board for two years. The house had a severe fire in it, there's a fence around it, had several complaints from the neighbors. We keep getting stories that it might be sold, it might not be, but at some point, I know our building inspector was asked to say whether it was safe or not safe. The fence isn't complete around the property, and we have had several complaints from neighbors about that. So I'd like to get a report on where we stand with that and what the next steps on that are.
I'd actually forgotten about that.
The neighbors have.
Could I just add something? I wanted to thank the police department for their very quick response to my concern the other day about the traffic, the speed of the traffic in Harwichport. They've got those speed indicators up already, so that was fantastic.
Good.
Yeah, I share Michael's concern. I've been in fairly constant contact with a number of the neighbors and also with the building commissioner, and there always seems to be somebody else who's trying to figure out what to do with it. And because of the web line constraints and because it's lost its grandfathering rights to have it be repaired on the way, nobody can seem to put together a deal. And at this point, it looks like it's just going to sit there until it literally falls of its own accord, and I think we can't let that happen.
Okay. Now, Don?
I'll chime in to support the two of them, because I've been in contact with people too. I mean, there's also, in its state, it's encouraging vermin to propagate, it's, the fences, a kid can slide in, even not only the part that's not finished, but it's articulated or hinges on it, so you could get through if you're small enough. So it's just an attractive nuisance on that. The other thing is tomorrow night, 6:30, town hall, the housing trust is, in accordance with our bylaws, is inviting the housing committee in to have a discussion about housing needs in the town. It's part of the beginning part of creating an action plan. So anybody who is a stakeholder, whether you're a builder or someone who wants to live in affordable housing, is invited to come and partake in the discussion. It's in this room.
Thank you for that, Don. That actually leads to, what I have is, Don, could you, can I ask you to bring that back to our agenda, just an update on the housing trust and all those figures going out? Because I don't, for me personally, I'm getting a little lost on some of these activities.
It isn't as complex as you think. I will bring it back, but essentially, we're in day zero because we never had an action plan, so.
Maybe just give us an update of who's doing what to whom, and that'd be great. Okay? Nothing else?
Into a jam?
Second?
Okay.
Thank you.